Therefore, Hungary is carrying out the largest humanitarian operation ever of our history. Up to now, we have received more than a million refugees. Obviously, we ensure them full and equal access to our education and healthcare system. We give incentive to companies in Hungary in order to encourage them to employ refugees. And already 1,300 schools and kindergartens in Hungary are enrolling refugee kids and refugee students. Believe me, it is heartbreaking to see those torn apart families who are arriving to Hungary on a daily basis, kids only with their mothers, leaving the fathers behind. Based on our experience in the neighbourhood, dear colleagues, this war has only brought suffering and this war has no winners. This war thus has only losers. Hundreds or even thousands of people are killed on a daily basis. Therefore, the most important duty of international community should be to save lives. And of course, the question must be raised, how it is possible? How it is possible to save lives of the people? The answer, it is simply to be said, more complicated to achieve, but the answer is peace. We can save lives of the people by creating peace. And based on our experience, it became already pretty obvious that neither delivery of weapons nor sanctions, those measures do not save lives. To the contrary, they contribute to the prolongation and the risk of escalation of this war, and they bring more suffering. That's why, dear Mr. President, dear colleagues, Hungary calls on the international community to finally start to concentrate on how to establish an immediate ceasefire and how to contribute to launching peace talks as soon as possible. Peace talks which should come to an agreement about a sustainable peace in our neighbourhood. And we also know from our sad experience that peace can only be reached through dialogue and discussion. Therefore, channels of communication must be kept open. If channels of communication are being cut, then it means that the hope for peace is given up as well. And here, Mr. President, I do believe that United Nations should fulfil its role. We all know that the United Nations, as an institution or as an organisation, has not been created as an integration of like-minded countries. United Nations have been created to serve as a platform for dialogue for those who even consider each other as enemies. Therefore, we urge talks between Russia and the United States to be started as soon as possible in the framework of the United Nations. We Hungarians, I want to underline again, we are living in the neighbourhood. And I can imagine that the situation in Ukraine might seem less serious from hundreds or thousands of kilometres away, or even from an ocean away. But believe me, believe us, in the neighbourhood, we are pretty much aware that we are in the 25th hour. And although Hungarian people are absolutely not responsible for the outbreak of this war, and although it is not our war, but still Hungary and the Hungarian people have already paid a very high price for this war. And, Mr. President, when I say this, I do not only speak about the skyrocketing inflation, I do not only speak about the extra 10 billion euros which have been added to our energy bill within the last year, but I do speak about the high number of those Hungarians, members of the Hungarian community in Ukraine, who have died on the front line. And we do not want any more people to die. That's why we urge all actors of international political life to refrain from decisions, measures and statements which bring the risk of prolongation or escalation of this war. Because I would like to remind all those big and strong countries who represent war rhetoric that they have not lost any lives in this war yet. But we Hungarians, we definitely did. Dear Mr. President, you know it very well, we Hungarians are living in Central Europe, and we have understood very clearly the lesson of history. We all know that whenever there was a conflict between East and West, we in Central Europe, we have always lost. Therefore, another major East to West conflict would definitely be against our national Complete generations in Hungary have lost decades from their lives because of the Cold War, and we do not want to lose more. We do not want the world to be divided into blocks again. Instead of blocks, we want connectivity and cooperation. And we do not want this regional war to become a global one. None of us should forget, dear colleagues, none of us should forget, that war is always a failure of diplomacy, and peace is always a success of diplomacy. That's why I hope all of us will multiply our diplomatic efforts in order to create peace finally in our neighbourhood. We hope that 2023 will be a year of peace and reconstruction. And Okur Kusunam Sipan, thank you so much for your kind attention.
I thank the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Hungary, Kusunam Minister. Now I give the floor to Her Excellency Olta Jacca, Minister for Europe and Foreign Affairs of Albania.
Mr. President of the General Assembly, Excellencies! One year ago, on this day, the world was holding its breath, waiting to see what choice Russia's president would make. On February 24th, we learned that he made his choice. This war is one for which there was no other reason than this choice by the Russian president. We should do well to remember that. Ukraine did not attack Russia. Ukraine did never threaten Russia. That claim is just as ludicrous today, when the whole world has seen the weakness of the Russian army, as it was back in February 23rd of last year, when most of the world expected the invasion to succeed in a matter of days. It was an unprovoked, illegal, criminal invasion of a country. It was above all an act of aggression that clearly violated the UN Charter and international law. One that was condemned in no uncertain terms and in landslide votes through a number of resolutions by this assembly. The International Court of Justice has also been very clear in its order of March 16th of last year, stating that the Russian Federation shall immediately suspend the military operations on the territory of Ukraine, and it must also ensure that other forces under its control or supported by Moscow should not continue the military operation. It is not just our evaluation of the military capabilities of the Russian army that has changed over the past year. The brutality of this force has become apparent to all. The war crimes it has committed in Ukraine in this past year, indiscriminate bombings of entire cities and towns, the rapes, the executions, the massive enrolment of convicts and mercenaries, are perhaps the best indictments of the true nature of Russia's war. Just as the truly heroic resistance of the Ukrainian people has rendered null any arguments and excuses Russia tried to present to the world in a vain attempt to gain legitimacy for its war of choice. This war has had dramatic consequences for the entire world. But I submit to all in this assembly that what we have seen until now is as nothing compared to what we would see if Russia is allowed to prevail in this conflict. Would anyone here, any of our countries here, be safer if the UN Charter and international law are allowed to be trampled in the manner Russia has done? I believe not. I believe that a world where might makes right, where countries can suddenly decide to attack their neighbours and annex parts of their territory, is a world that would not benefit any one of us or our people. It would practically mean to go back to the logic of 1930s. That is why Albania fully supports the resolution, UN Charter principles, underlying a comprehensive, just and lasting peace in Ukraine. That is why we believe that this assembly must vote in support of this resolution and make clear its support for a just peace in Ukraine in accordance with the principles of the UN Charter, which should guarantee the sovereignty, independence, unity and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognised borders extending to its territorial waters. In the same vein, we oppose the hostile amendments presented by Belarus. They represent no effort to contribute to peace but an attempt to shield the aggressor. They must be rejected, and we call on all the UN members to vote no. Albania requests a recorded vote on the two amendments proposed by Belarus, A/ES11/L8 and A/ES11/L9. Thank you.
I thank the Minister for Europe and Foreign Affairs of Albania. Now I give the floor to Her Excellency Catherine Colonna, Minister for Europe and Foreign Affairs of France.
Ministers, dear colleagues, ambassadors! It has been a year now since Russia launched its war of aggression against Ukraine without any justification and completely illegally. And for the past year, it has waged a brutal war there, a war which violates the most fundamental principles of our common charter as well as its own commitments. This has been a year of war marked by successive abuses and crimes so serious and systematic that the International Criminal Court has launched investigations into war crimes, crimes against humanity and genocide. None of us can turn a blind eye to executions, torture, sexual violence as a weapon of war, kidnappings and deportations of children. However, Ukraine has been resisting admirably for a year. It is resisting for its own independence, for its freedom and for its right to build the future it has chosen. As I stand here before our assembly, I wish to express France's absolute determination to support Ukraine, so that it can not only resist, exercise its right to self-defence, a right recognised by our common charter, but also so that it can enforce its sovereignty and territorial integrity. These are also principles that unite us. I do so so that Ukraine can therefore thwart Russia's aggression, which is a serious threat to international peace and stability, and therefore to the peace and security of all of us. This is a matter of concern for all of our states, because there will be no peace and security anywhere if aggression is rewarded. This war waged by Russia is therefore everybody's business, because it threatens the existence of a state, because it represents a domineering and imperialist plan, because it denies the existence of borders. It is everyone's business. As the President of the Republic Emmanuel Macron said from this rostrum last September, neutrality is not a possibility, because neutrality would amount to becoming an accomplice of the aggressor. Letting Russia dictate the terms would be a fatal blow to the international rules-based order to which we have all subscribed for 75 years. It would undermine the very foundations of our collective security. Our common duty is to prevent Russian aggression from being only the first step towards a period of serious instability and systemic violence, which would spare no region of the world. And none of us would have any reason to sleep easy in a world in which a great power, which moreover possesses nuclear weapons and is a permanent Security Council member, could at its own discretion decide to attack its neighbours, to deprive them of their freedom. Russia is trying to convince some of you that its attempts to upset the world order and impose a strength-based order will work in their favour. This is an illusion. The facts bear this out. It was Russia and Russia alone that wanted the war. Its war poses risks to world food security, particularly in the most vulnerable countries. Similarly, it has adverse consequences for most countries of the world. No more war, no more blockades or strain on food or energy. Mr. President, for a year now, this assembly has remained active in the face of this unacceptable situation. Five times since February 24th last year, the assembly has expressed its commitment to the sovereignty, independence and territorial integrity of Ukraine as the fundamental principles of the United Nations Charter. Today's vote must allow us to recall these rules and principles without which peace and security would be nothing but empty words. The draft resolution presented to you recalls that it is only with the respect for these principles that strong and lasting peace can be built. Conversely, Russia shows no desire for peace and respects no boundaries. The only dialogue it will accept is that which subjugates the other side, in Ukraine as elsewhere. The only peace it accepts is the silence of the dead and of ruins. Russia points the finger at others only to better deceive and absolve itself of its own crimes. Nobody here wants to go to war with Russia and certainly not Ukraine. No one threatened the security of Russia or undermines its integrity. No one has used the same nuclear rhetoric. No one but Russia wanted the tragedy unfolding before our eyes. Russia can and must stop tomorrow. The International Court of Justice demanded this on the 16th of March last year. The draft resolution that is proposed by Ukraine is the result of a transparent and universal negotiation process reflecting a clear desire to bring together a broad consensus around our common rules and principles, those of our charter. It calls for a just and lasting peace that fully respects these principles, as our common interests demand. Faithful to its tradition and its values, France will give this text its full support. It calls on all states to act responsibly and do the same. Thank you. I thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs of France.
And now I give the floor to His Excellency Rastisav Kacar, Minister for Foreign and European Affairs of Slovakia.
Dear Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, fellow ministers! Seventy-seven years ago, the United Nations founding fathers, I'm very proud to say, one of 14 was Slovak diplomat Jan Papanek, established this organisation with the aim to save future generations from atrocities of war. Their vision was simple and straightforward, to build a world in which every human being lives in peace, in prosperity, while promoting friendly relations and cooperation among nations. Today, we must admit that this noble mission is facing a severe challenge. Effective multilateralism is falling apart, with one member state is blatantly violating fundamental principles and values of this organisation. The state upon which the UN Charter bestowed the privilege of guarding these very principles through the provision of a permanent seat in the Security Council, the Russian Federation. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, we strongly condemn the ongoing, unprovoked and unjustified military aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine in violation of all fundamental values and principles of the UN Charter and international law. We reiterate our call for an immediate cessation of Russian military activities in Ukraine and demand an unconditional withdrawal of all Russian troops from the whole territory of Ukraine. In this regard, we would like to echo the words of the Secretary-General who previously said: enough is enough. Yet it seems the Russian Federation obviously does not understand this appeal. On the contrary, it goes on with its misleading rhetoric, propaganda and the distortion of facts on the ground promoting some kind of alternative reality. It is our duty to take a fierce stand against these actions and the spreading of lies and deceptive narratives. The aggression has caused food insecurity, is fueling a global inflation with devastating impacts mainly on the most vulnerable countries of the world. Millions of Ukrainians had to flee their homes, 90% of whom are women and children. Slovakia is one of those countries where more than 100,000 of them found temporary refuge. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, today we have gathered here in New York with one goal: to reaffirm our steadfast commitment to the values and principles of the UN Charter. Russia's ignorant attempt at redrawing internationally recognised borders as a sovereign country presents a grave threat not only to Europe. Let us be clear: this is not about Ukraine only, whose very existence is questioned today by one member state. Tomorrow, sovereignty, territorial integrity and independence of any country might be at stake. This is about effective multilateralism, which is under a severe threat. We cannot afford to let it go, to let it vanish. We need it for today and for future generations. We have all duty to protect the rule-based world. Therefore, I encourage you to vote yes for the adoption of the resolution which Slovakia strongly supports. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the Minister for Foreign and European Affairs of Slovakia. Now I give the floor to His Excellency Gorda Angreli-Juradman, Minister for Foreign and European Affairs of Croatia.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, dear colleagues! It has been a year since the Russian Federation began to carry out its so-called special military operation, which is in fact a brutal aggression against its neighbour Ukraine. We are also well reminded that this is an escalation, not a aggression, which started in 2014 with Russia's illegal annexation of Crimea. The fact is that the Russian aggression against Ukraine is a blatant violation of international law and the UN Charter by a permanent member of the Security Council, and a nuclear weapon state no less. It is bound to have long-lasting implications for the UN as a whole. Its logic of war and impunity has brought about immense suffering, death and injury of hundreds of thousands, mass displacement of people and targeted destruction of civilian infrastructure necessary for maintaining basic needs of life. Its menacing execution brought with itself war crimes and crimes against humanity, while the illegal annexation of parts of Ukrainian territory showed cynical disregard for the UN Charter itself. Finally, it has impacted livelihoods around the globe, as it disrupted the global economic flows and instigated worldwide energy and food insecurity. Your Excellencies, the unprovoked and unjustified aggression against Ukraine has challenged the very principles of the global security architecture and eroded the rules-based international order, with profound consequences for years to come. We must not stand silent in the face of those who destroy and violate the most fundamental human and sovereign rights of states. We owe it to our countries, to our citizens and to all those that will come after us. If we fail now, not only will our present look grim, but the cause of our failure we pass to future generations. For the same reason, we should support all efforts to establish accountability for the crimes committed in Ukraine, and we welcome the International Court of Justice order seeking the Russian Federation to immediately suspend its so-called military operation. Excellencies, dear colleagues, dear friends, it is the bravery and determination of the Ukrainian people that stands in the way of the aggressor. The war in Ukraine sadly resembles the one in Croatia three decades ago. We in Croatia unfortunately know too well how this feels. Propaganda on the purported need for denazification and protection of a minority, followed by a self-declared republic on Croatia's soil, invasion and aggression. However, our fight for liberty took for long years. Let us not make Ukraine wait that long for freedom. We stand with Ukraine and its people. We will continue to support them in their right to defend themselves and to defend the UN Charter as well. The global community also stand with Ukraine, as evidenced by the continuing support of the vast majority of UN member states for General Assembly resolutions calling for an end of the Russian aggression. By standing with Ukraine, we are standing in defence of the pillars of our system and demonstrating our resolve to protect the UN Charter. The resolution we are debating today is a further demonstration of that resolve. Croatia stands firm in supporting the territorial integrity, independence and sovereignty of Ukraine within its internationally recognised borders, knowing that a comprehensive, just and lasting peace can only be founded upon these very principles. I thank you.
I thank the Minister for Foreign and European Affairs of Croatia. Now I give the floor to His Excellency Zbigniew Rał, Minister for Foreign Affairs of Poland.
A year has passed since the Russian invasion against Ukraine started. It has been a year of immense suffering, death and destruction. Today, we gather here to call for peace. The resolution that has been put forward before the General Assembly defines the steps that need to be taken to achieve it. A comprehensive, just and lasting peace is the only acceptable option to end the war in Ukraine. It is possible only when sovereignty, independence and territorial integrity of Ukraine is reconfirmed. Russia must immediately, completely and unconditionally withdraw its forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognised borders. It is of fundamental importance to ensure Russia's full accountability for the crimes it has committed in Ukraine. Poland supports international initiative towards that end and towards redressing in an adequate form all wrongs inflicted by Russia in this war. Today, in light of Russia's total disregard for international law and the UN principles, we must reconfirm our commitment to the basic rules of international order. Mr. President, Russia continues its brutal aggression, attacking Ukraine's civilian population and non-military infrastructure, committing war crimes and atrocities, including the killing of women and children. the killing of women and children, torture, sexual violence and forcible deportations. Standing up against Russia, Ukrainians made history themselves. They stood up to a tyrannical force with courage and resilience. They chose to fight to defend their independence, freedom and identity. More than that, they defended the rules-based international order. The brave Ukrainian nation deserves not only our compassion, but also our support and solidarity. Poland will continue to assist Ukraine for as long as it takes. In addition to offering shelter to millions of Ukrainian refugees, Poland keeps providing and facilitating transfers of aid. We are the main support gateway for Ukraine and we are going to continue this role as long as it is needed. Mr. President, this war and its outcome matter throughout the world. Russia's invasion has contributed to a sharp increase in fuel, fertilizers and food prices. It caused disruptions of supply chains. The resulting crisis is especially harsh on those most vulnerable. There is no doubt that Russia is solely responsive for this dire situation. For Russia, this war is about its imperial desires and ambitions. For Ukraine, it is about defending its inalienable right to sovereignty and territorial integrity. For all of us gathered here, this war is about the most fundamental UN principles. Let us reaffirm their significance and our commitment to them. Let us not render them irrelevant. It is simply our duty to support a comprehensive, just and lasting peace in Ukraine in line with the UN Charter. Thank you.
I thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs of Poland. Now I give the floor to His Excellency Yoshi Masahayashi, Minister for Foreign Affairs of Japan.
One hundred ninety-three member states in this General Assembly hall, they present one hundred ninety-three different positions. Such diverse views, I believe, can converge on one specific point: we all want peace in Ukraine, or at least the overwhelming majority of us want peace in Ukraine. This draft resolution is about peace. However, peace must be based on principles. Hostilities must stop now, but this would not necessarily produce a comprehensive, just and lasting peace. Imagine yourself: what if a permanent member of the Security Council roached an aggression against your homeland, grabbed your territory and then ceased hostilities, calling for a peace? I would call it an unjust peace. It would be a victory for the aggressor if such actions were tormented. It would set a terrible precedent for the rest of the planet. The world would leap out to the jungle, where a brute force and coercion would prevail. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, peace must be based on the principles of the United Nations Charter. That is why Japan supports this draft resolution entitled Principles of the Charter of the United Nations underlying a comprehensive, just and lasting peace in Ukraine. I urge my fellow colleagues gathered here today to vote in favor of it. Russia must first and foremost withdraw its troops immediately and unconditionally from Ukraine. The General Assembly has demanded it, as has the Secretary General and the International Court of Justice. Unfortunately, Russia seemingly cannot care about the General Assembly resolutions and ICJ orders, as if they were just pieces of waste paper. In addition, abusing the veto power is not enough for Russia. It also abuses its status as a nuclear weapons state with its illicit possible rhetoric. Russia's nuclear threats, let alone any use of its nuclear weapons, shall never be tormented. Russia should be held accountable for all of its acts in an appropriate manner, as our member states should also refrain from supporting the aggression either directly or indirectly. In this regard, the proposed amendments by Belarus are an attempt to distract the attention of the member states from the fact that the Russian aggression is in violation of the barely principles of the United Nations Charter. I urge fellow colleagues to vote against the amendments. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, my heart bleeds for the dire humanitarian situation of the people over Ukraine. Japan will continue to provide support for them, along with fellow members of the international community. At the same time, we must not forget that many other people around the world are suffering as well: natural disasters, conflicts, violence, terrorism, food and energy crisis, climate change, infection diseases, the list goes on and on. We need an integrated and tailored approach to deal with these issues, and that is what the United Nations excels at. However, the UN is now being tested. It has been damaged. We need to restore trust in this organization. We need to unite ourselves again. We need to strengthen the entire organization to cope with today's ever-more-complex and interlinked challenges. This will entail not only the form of the Security Council, but also enhanced laws for the General Assembly, the Secretary General, the Economic and Social Council, the Peacebuilding Commission and other bodies of the United Nations. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, next year, we should not meet here to mark the second anniversary of this senseless war of aggression. Instead, we should work towards peace guided by the rule of law. Let us meet here for the 2024 Summit of the Future and make it a summit of peace. Let us mark 2024 as a year of a strengthened United Nations. I thank you.
I thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs of Japan. Now I give the floor to Her Excellency Haja Lahbib, Minister for Foreign Affairs, European Affairs and Foreign Trade and the Federal Cultural Institutions of Belgium.
Mr. President, excellences, ladies and gentlemen, we did not want this war. We wanted to live in peace, respecting the principles to which the entire international community subscribed by adhering to the United Nations Charter. All of us present here made a commitment through Article II to respecting the territorial integrity, internationally recognized borders and to settle our disputes peacefully. And all of this was flouted by Russia on February twenty-fourth of last year. And no, this is not a war of the West against Russia. While Ukraine is the first victim, attacked on its territory and threatened in its very existence, it is the entire international community which has been affected and has been shaken, because this aggression undermines the international order, food, financial and energy security. It sells doubts, increases nuclear risk and impacts the environment. One year after the Russian aggression in Ukraine, the world stands impoverished and global security is threatened. But we are present. Many of us have traveled all the way to New York to call for a just and lasting peace and we wholeheartedly hope that this resolution will bring us even closer together tomorrow, because we do not want an uncertain world where insecurity, danger and threats become the norm, because we want to have confidence in the future, because together we are capable of the best, even in difficult circumstances. Thanks to the efforts of UN agencies and the Secretary General, the Black Sea Grain Initiative has enabled vital food supplies to be delivered to countries indirectly affected by this conflict. We have not forgotten them, just as we have not forgotten the crises on other continents, some of which have worsened following Russian aggression in Ukraine. The misinformation, the alternative truths, the false equivalencies and biased reasoning that our Russian colleagues have been spreading for almost a year now are not backed up by the hard facts, the cruel realities that we are facing such as kidnappings, displacement or deportations. Justice will find the right words to describe the suffering of thousands of Ukrainian children. Bucha, Irpin, Mariupol, these cities have been forever marked by horror. Over the past year, we have witnessed Russia's relentless violations of international humanitarian and human rights law. These crimes cannot go unpunished. Belgium reiterates its support for the investigations carried out by the prosecutor of the International Criminal Court. We strongly advocate for a world where norms and the rule of law prevail over the principle of might makes right. It is in this spirit that we must define the principles of a comprehensive, just and lasting peace. Belgium fully supports the draft resolution submitted to us, which was drafted in an inclusive and transparent manner. It is a moment of truth that is bringing us together today to tell the truth. Belgium joins the large number of those who call for the immediate, complete and unconditional withdrawal of all the military forces of the Russian Federation from Ukrainian territory and for a return to the internationally recognized borders of Ukraine. Going forward and until peace is attained, Belgium will support Ukraine for as long as necessary to preserve the full meaning of the concept of collective security, which is at the heart of the United Nations Charter and at the heart of peace. Thank you.
Je remercie.
I thank the distinguished Minister of Belgium.
Now I give the floor to His Excellency Jan Lipavski, Minister for Foreign Affairs of Czechia.
Mr. President, we are meeting one year since the start of Russia's brutal war against Ukraine to yet again resolutely defend the UN Charter and promote international peace and security in line with the United for Peace Resolution. We are horrified by Russia's blatant violation of international order. The UN Charter is binding upon all member states, including Russia. Russia must immediately, completely and unconditionally withdraw its forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized border. Czechia stands with Ukraine and remains committed to supporting Ukraine's wish for a just peace in line with the UN Charter. Russia's aggression is causing unspeakable suffering in Ukraine and beyond. It has sent a shockwave into the world food and commodity markets and is threatening to drive fifty million people on the edge of famine across Africa and other continents. We support the Black Sea Grain Initiative and the UN efforts to achieve its further extension in March 2023. We cherish UN actions which address wider consequences of the Russia-inflicted war, including global food security. We commend the Secretary General for his relentless efforts to stop Russia's aggression and restore respect for the UN Charter. We appreciate the peace formula presented by President Zelensky. Let me be clear: Russia's malicious ambitions go far beyond Ukraine. It wants to change the international order. Russia wants a world defined by spheres of influence with neocolonial relationship instead of partnerships on equal footing. Our region, Central Europe, has had its own tragic experience with Russia's aggressive imperial policy. For the sake of restoring international peace and security, it is essential to say no to Russia's imperialistic scheme. All of us should be aware that any country can be the next Russia's victim. The future of the international order is being determined now. Ukraine is not only defending itself and its principle and its people, it is also defending the fundamental principles of the UN Charter. Efforts to legitimize the use of force for achieving geopolitical goals and normalize practices such as food supplies blackmail or nuclear sub-rattling must be decisively rejected. Russia's massive airstrikes deliberately conducted in densely populated areas are destroying civilian infrastructure and innocent lives. The findings of the UN Commission of Inquiry are shocking, documenting sexual violence and torture used as Russia's tactics of war. We are greatly concerned about the continued attacks of the Russian Armed Forces around Ukraine nuclear sites and the illegal seizure of Zaporozhye Nuclear Power Plant. Full accountability for war crimes and all other crimes in connection with Russia's war must be ensured, including accountability for the crime of aggression. Letting the leadership responsible for the crime of aggression go unpunished would mean giving up on the fight against impunity and fueling aggression. I am strong proponent of creating a special tribunal for the crime of aggression against Ukraine, even though it is a complex task. I strongly believe that there should also be a UN involvement to ensure maximum legitimacy and support. The humanitarian toll of the world is heartbreaking. Russia's barbaric full-scale war brings back horrors of the Second World War. Entire towns and villages have been damaged and destroyed, critical civilian infrastructure deliberately destroyed. In the middle of this savage winter, people are trying to escape from Russian bombs and survive in temporary shelters. The war has forced over eight million Ukrainians to flee abroad. In the spirit of solidarity, Czechia has opened its doors. Almost half a million of them have been granted temporary protection in my country, most of them women and children. We remain the country hosting the highest number of Ukrainian refugees per capita, even though it brings some challenges for the state and our citizens, especially at a time of economic and energy crisis. Our country and people have demonstrated an unprecedented wave of solidarity. We have also provided humanitarian assistance to Ukraine through in-kind and material support so that people affected by the war in freezing temperatures have access to healthcare, drinking water, electricity and heating. Here, I would like to stress that our assistance to Ukraine does not affect our humanitarian aid nor budget when helping other countries in need. Mr. President, my country strongly supports the draft resolution put to our consideration. It defends the principles of sovereign equality and territorial integrity of states. I would like to appeal to all those who might be tempted today to take a neutral stance and to those who believe that it is not their war if we don't act. Now, we are accepting a new international order based on use of brutal force, based on colonialism. Thank you very much.
I thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs of Czechia. Now I offer the floor to His Excellency Gabrielius Landsbergis, Minister for Foreign Affairs of Lithuania.
Mr. Secretary General of the United Nations, Mr. President of the General Assembly, Ministers, Ambassadors, ladies and gentlemen. One year ago, at the dawn of 24th February, Russia, aided by its accomplice Belarus, started its unprovoked, unjustified, illegal and bloody invasion against its peaceful and democratic neighbor, Ukraine. This was not the start of the war, which Russia wages since 2014, when it illegally occupied Crimea and parts of eastern Ukraine. Neither was it the first time Russia attacked its neighbors. The crime of aggression was immediately followed by war crimes, crimes against humanity and other large-scale systemic violations of international law that have caused a humanitarian and human rights catastrophe with far-reaching consequences across the globe. The global food security crisis, multiple crises in nuclear security and safety, energy, finance, environment, as well as a direct threat to the preservation of cultural heritage are all direct outcomes of Russia's aggression. We are appalled by the harrowing evidence of atrocities amounting to genocide committed by the Russian Armed Forces and Kremlin-backed mercenaries, wide-scale destruction of cities and critical infrastructure, mass civilian casualties, forcible transfers of Ukrainians to Russia, abductions, and illegal adoption of Ukrainian children, abuse of prisoners of war, torture, sexual violence, all bear witness to the moral abyss into which their aggressor has fallen. These brutal atrocities are a clear expression of Russia's total disregard for the core UN Charter principles of sovereignty, territorial integrity, international human rights and international humanitarian law. Over the past year, Ukraine and its people have shown remarkable courage and resilience in defending not just their own country but the whole rules-based international order. We applaud Ukraine's heroic defensive effort that succeeded in stopping the advancement of invading forces and destroying the myth of Russia's military invincibility. The United Nations has demonstrated significant solidarity as the overwhelming majority of its membership condemned Russia's aggression as a blatant violation of the UN Charter and in resolution after resolution demanded for its unconditional withdrawal. This assembly also stripped Russia of its seat on the UN Human Rights Council, declared stage annexation referendums illegal, and took important first steps towards the international mechanism for Russia's reparations to Ukraine. The efforts of the UN Secretary General were instrumental in sending much-needed Ukrainian grain to those in need, and UN established Independent International Commission of Inquiry now investigates Russia's war crimes in Ukraine. The international community also came up with much-needed aid. Lithuania is proud to be among the first to provide military assistance, grant protection to tens of thousands of Ukrainians, and give humanitarian relief. The whole Lithuanian nation is behind this effort, with private citizens and businesses welcoming Ukrainians to their own homes and donating over 40 million euros to support Ukrainian Armed Forces from basic needs to combat drones and multi-functional radar stations. However, none of that is sufficient to stop Russia's war. While Russia engages in blame games and accusations, its real objective is to create spheres of influence, instability and domination, spheres that hark back to colonial times, which this organization was so determined to leave behind forever. Russia continues its aggression because we allow it to act with impunity. As the UN Security Council remains effectively paralyzed by Russia's abuse of its veto, the role and responsibility of the UN General Assembly becomes ever more important. We, the member states, should rise up to the challenge by supporting President Zelensky's peace formula that firmly rests on the principles of the UN Charter and the rules-based international order. First and foremost, we must demand full withdrawal and expulsion of the invading forces from all occupied territories of Ukraine and should not shy away from supporting Ukraine's decisive military action. Second, we must seek full accountability of the perpetrators. In this regard, we welcome the efforts by the International Criminal Court, regional bodies and individual states to prosecute those responsible for war crimes, crimes against humanity and the crime of genocide in Ukraine. At the same time, since International Criminal Court will not have the jurisdiction over the crime of aggression, we call on this assembly to mandate an establishment of the special tribunal to prosecute the crime of aggression and provide the tribunal with international legitimacy and cross-regional support. Third, we should explore all means to ensure that Russian assets are used to compensate for all material and moral damages caused by the aggression. We welcome the first steps this assembly has taken towards allowing the victims of Russia's crimes to exercise their right to reparation. Mr. President, dear colleagues, with today's draft resolution that Lithuania is co-sponsoring, we aim to support and encourage all efforts for a comprehensive, just and lasting peace in line with the United Nations Charter. It is essential that United Nations membership remains together with Ukraine and stands up against aggression and speaks out in defense or sovereignty and territorial integrity. At the end of the day, that is the only way we can defend the relevance of the United Nations Charter and this organization.
I thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs of Lithuania. Now I give the floor to His Excellency Bouya Rusmani, Minister for Foreign Affairs of North Macedonia.
Mr. President, esteemed excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Precisely one year ago, the unthinkable happened, war of aggression in Europe in the 21st century after decades of carefully and skillfully crafted international order based on rules and principles. This very organization was created, and I quote, "to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war," unquote. Now when the people of Ukraine suffer from the scourge of unprovoked, unjustified and deliberate war of aggression, this organization should raise its voice clearly and loudly through representatives of sovereign member states, both in solidarity and in condemnation. In solidarity because today it is Ukraine, tomorrow it could be any of our states who rely on the norms and principles of international law and consider the Charter of the United Nations as the undisputable guarantee for their independence, sovereignty and territorial integrity. Condemnation because it's not acceptable that anyone and not talk about the permanent member of the Security Council, a supposed guardian of peace and stability in the world, and under any circumstances and pretext possible invades a sovereign state, destroy its infrastructure and infringes unbearable suffering to the civilian population. We cannot allow or admit the territorial conquest and changes of borders by war, neither ridiculously staged referenda on thus occupied territories. We cannot accept the return of spheres of influence, rule of force and the right of the strongest to decide the destiny of other nations. My country, North Macedonia, voiced this principled position from the first day of aggression. For us, it is not and has never been a question about simply taking a side between the two billionaires because it is not what really happens. It's the Russian Federation by violating the UN Charter that deliberately chooses the wrong side of the history. The majority of the member states of the UN have clearly acknowledged this regretful fact by voting previous relevant resolutions from this 11th emergency special session of the General Assembly. We urge Russia once again to end this senseless war and withdraw its troops from the sovereign territory of Ukraine. The immense damage has already been done, and every additional day of aggression only further exacerbates human sufferings. Excellencies, in 2022, Russia decided to violate one of the most basic principles of international law and launch a fully-fledged war of aggression against Ukraine, a UN founding member state and neighbor. This has shattered the peace and installed insecurity and uncertainty. The food and energy insecurity worldwide are only some of the direct consequences of this aggression, but the biggest danger lies in challenging the whole rule-based international order. The international community embodied in the United Nations can't afford that this gross violation of all norms and principles goes without response. Justice and accountability are needed for the sake of the victims in the first place, but they are also prerequisites for avoiding further aggressions and unprovoked use of force in international relations. North Macedonia subscribed to this demand by supporting the ICC prosecutor's investigation of war crimes and crimes against humanity committed in Ukraine. Additionally, the whole international human rights mechanism should be implemented in fighting impunity and holding accountable those responsible for the war crimes and other violations of international humanitarian law or abusing human rights. The adoption of the UNGA resolution is of paramount importance in this regard. My country figures among the initial co-sponsors and joins other members of the international community in a common endeavor to restore peace and to safeguard the rules-based international order. That wouldn't be possible without ensuring full accountability for wrongdoings. What is there at stake is no less than a vision of a world we want to live in. Either we will secure peaceful coexistence and cooperation among nations free from menaces of war and aggression, or we will be forced to live in constant fear, instability and uncertainty. It's up to each and every one present in this August assembly to decide on behalf of the nations we represent. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, as of 4th of January this year, North Macedonia assumed the chairpersonship of the OSCE, the largest regional security organization in the world. The Russian aggression against Ukraine erodes also the foundation of this organization by violating the provisions of the Helsinki Final Act. I visited Ukraine in my first trip abroad in capacity of the OSCE chair. In Borodjanka near Kiev, I saw the devastating consequences of war. I visited the replaced civilians in the camp nearby, and while talking to them, I asked myself, what did these innocent civilians, most of them elderly people or children, do wrong to deserve this destiny? And more, what we as international community could do more than humanitarian assistance to alleviate these unsupportable human sufferings? At the end of the day, as the motto of our chairpersonship with the OSCE says, "It's about people." What is the sense of our political actions nationally and internationally if we stay idle in front of human sufferings caused not by natural disasters but by deliberate war of aggression? Accountability today is a more moral imperative as it is the most effective means to avoid this happening again in another place, to another sovereign state, to another people. At one point, the war will end, the infrastructure will be restored, the houses rebuilt, but the victims of this senseless aggression deserve more. They deserve justice. And humanity deserves a more solid and anchored base for avoiding the wars of aggression in the future. Accountability is not an objective per se, but it is, in my sincere view, the indispensable tool to secure peace, stability and security worldwide and to really save succeeding generations from the scourge of war. I thank the President of the General Assembly for convening this session, and I thank all of you for your attention.
I thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs of North Macedonia. I now offer the floor to His Excellency Wapke Hoekstra, Minister for Foreign Affairs of the Netherlands.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen. Tomorrow, we mark a sad one-year anniversary, the anniversary of Russia's illegal invasion of Ukraine, a war for which Russia and Russia alone is responsible. Over the past year, we have witnessed how Russia's aggression is slowly destroying Ukraine, how innocent men, women and children are being killed, how schools, hospitals and entire neighborhoods are being wiped out, and how the Ukrainian people are enduring murder, rape, torture and abduction. But make no mistake, this war is not only an attack on Ukraine, it is an attack on the principle of sovereignty, it is an attack on the UN Charter, the UN Charter all of us have signed, an attack on our security, our economies and on the SDGs that were already in jeopardy. It is an attack on all we stand for, despite all of our differences. And if we turn a blind eye to Russia's aggression, if we allow it to trample the UN Charter, if might becomes right, then I can only see more hardship, more instability and more suffering ahead of us. Ladies and gentlemen, the only way forward, the only way forward is to commit to the agreements we have made by making sure that Ukraine survives as a state within its internationally recognized borders and by working for a real, just and lasting peace for Ukraine. That is our common responsibility, and that is why the Netherlands is doing all it can to support Ukraine. And we will do everything. We will do everything in our power to ensure that Russia is held to account and that justice will be done. We're taking a leading role in this for the very reason that all of us here should not accept a world where brute force prevails our justice. And that is why we strongly support the Ukrainian Prosecutor General and International Criminal Court. That is why we will be sending two more forensic investigation teams in 2023, and that is why we will host a new international center for the prosecution of the crime of aggression and if damage is registered in the Hague. Ladies and gentlemen, we all want peace, and the road to peace is actually very simple. This war can end today if Russia sends its soldiers home. Just send them home, just send them home. But while this war continues, and as long as it continues, the Netherlands will do all we can to help Ukraine. And we call on you, we call on all of you, dear friends, to join us, to underline our commitment, our joint commitment to the UN Charter, to the rules-based order it presents, and to vote yes, to vote yes on the resolution that is put in front of this assembly today. Thank you.
I thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs of the Netherlands. Now I give the floor to His Excellency Edgar Rinkovic, Minister for Foreign Affairs of Latvia.
Mr. President, a year ago, Russia started its brutal invasion against Ukraine. Latvia stands together with Ukraine against this senseless war. Latvia stands for justice, Latvia stands for just peace. We condemn in the strongest possible terms Russia's unprovoked, large-scale aggression against Ukraine enabled by Belarus. Russia's actions are driven by its imperial and colonial ambitions. They undermine the rules-based international order rooted in the United Nations Charter. We are witnessing blatant disregard for the international law. As a nuclear power, Russia continues to use irresponsible nuclear rhetoric. Only this week, Russia suspended its participation in the New START treaty. A permanent A permanent member of the United Nations Security Council attempts to change borders of another sovereign country by the use of military force. Permanent members of the Security Council have a particular responsibility to maintain international peace and security. Every sovereign country has a right to choose its own foreign policy course. It applies to Ukraine as well as to any other country. Ukraine has a right to defend itself against foreign aggression. Ukraine fights for its survival, its right to exist. The sole responsibility for the war lays on Russia. Russia started this war, and Russia alone can and must end it immediately.
I address the people of Russia. Ukraine did not attack you. NATO did not attack you. It is your own government that attacked Ukraine. It is your soldiers that are killing peaceful civilians in Ukraine. You can stop this war, and you must do so. Russia must leave Ukraine.
Latvia strongly condemns deliberate attacks by Russia against civilian and critical infrastructure in Ukraine. Residential areas, schools, kindergartens, hospitals, and critical energy infrastructure are destroyed by Russian bombings. Innocent civilians, including children, are killed. More than 17 million people have been forced to leave their homes or flee their country. The international community must continue to provide all necessary support to Ukraine, including military and humanitarian. Latvia's assistance to Ukraine has significantly exceeded 1% of our GDP. The provided support will set the pace for further reconstruction process in Ukraine. Latvia has engaged in the reconstruction of Chernihiv region. Horrific crimes in Ukraine remind of the bitter experience of Latvian people during the Soviet occupation. We condemn the illegal deportation of Ukrainian civilians to Russia and forced illegal adaptation of Ukrainian children. We condemn the forced passportization and conscription to the Russian armed forces of the Ukrainian citizens. Russia must stop violating international humanitarian law and human rights. Crimes committed by Russia cannot and will not go unpunished. We commend efforts of the International Criminal Court to investigate atrocity crimes and to serve justice for victims. Regrettably, the International Criminal Court and national judicial systems cannot exercise jurisdiction to prosecute the crime of aggression. Latvia calls for establishment of ad hoc tribunal under the auspices of the United Nations. This will grant the tribunal strong international legitimacy and provide a basis for applying exceptions from the personal immunities. Those in Russian leadership responsible for crimes must be held accountable. Mr. President, Russian propaganda seeks to justify its legal invasion and to deny its crimes. It tries to shift the blame for global consequences of this war. We must resist such disinformation with truth and facts. Those Russian individuals and groups engaged in propaganda in support of Russia's aggression against Ukraine must be held accountable. To counter disinformation, Latvia will continue to support independent media. Russia's war against Ukraine has caused serious long-term geopolitical, economic, and humanitarian consequences far beyond Europe. Food and energy are instruments in Russia's warfare affecting people globally. It is Russia's war against Ukraine that has caused shortage of food supplies and the rise of energy prices, not the sanctions. We commend the Black Sea Rain Initiative, which must be continued. We support the work of the World Food Program. Last year, the Latvian government decided to unblock the Russia's fertilizers in Latvian ports. Fertilizers are to be donated to countries of the Global South to improve food security worldwide. Mr. President, we welcome President Zelensky's 10-point peace formula and strongly support his vision for peace that rests on the principles of the United Nations Charter. Russia must withdraw its forces from the entire territory of Ukraine. I call on all members of the United Nations to support the principles of sovereignty and territorial integrity. I urge member states to vote in favor of the resolution for just and lasting peace in Ukraine. May this year mark a victory over tyranny, cruelty, and sufferings. Thank you very much.
I thank the Minister for Foreign Affairs of Latvia. Now I give the floor to His Excellency Ignacio Casas, Head of the Federal Department of Foreign Affairs of Switzerland.
Thank you, Mr. President. For a year now, ladies and gentlemen, we have all been witnessing the serious violations of the United Nations Charter in Ukraine. For a year now, Russia's military aggression against Ukraine has continued in defiance of international law. For a year, the trust and the security order that has prevailed in Europe have been under Every country in the world has been affected in some way by the repercussions of this war. Its consequences are disastrous. The human cost is impossible to quantify. In addition to the thousands of dead, wounded, and missing on the ground, more than 8 million people have had to flee their homes. Eight million. This represents the entire population of my country, Switzerland. Last year, I saw with my own eyes the destruction and suffering in and around Kiev. All of us here now have the names, the names and the inhuman images of Bucha, Kramatorsk, Mariupol, Kharkov, and Kherson in our minds. These horrors are taking place as we are about to commemorate the 75 years of the Geneva Conventions next year. With these conventions, we wanted to raise the law above barbarism, including international humanitarian law. We wanted to turn the page on the experiences of past wars. This assembly has repeatedly stated that such wars must never happen again. The Russian military aggression against Ukraine shows us once again that we are not safe. A permanent member of the Security Council has decided to attack its neighbor, an independent and sovereign nation. But let us not give up. That would be a serious mistake. It would be a vindication of all forces seeking power, no matter how they use it. Mr. President, with the resolution submitted to the vote today, we are sending a strong message of peace and respect for the law and the principles that unite us. Switzerland strongly condemns the serious violations of humanitarian and human rights law committed in Ukraine. And I call on the entire international community here today to work side by side towards a peaceful resolution of this conflict. Ukrainians have the right to live in peace, a peace built on the fundamental principles of international law, such as the prohibition of the use of force, territorial integrity, and national sovereignty. Switzerland is ready to play its part. Let us together reaffirm the importance of the United Nations Charter at a time when major challenges require urgent global solutions. Consider energy shortages, food insecurity, inflation, climate change, and migration. These challenges remind us that we all depend on each other. They remind us of our responsibilities. Turning inward is not a solution. Let us strengthen our ties, mend the cracks in our institutions, and restore our mutual Finally, we must allow the Ukrainian people and all the peoples of the world who have been struck by war to regain hope and live in peace. Our unity is critical. Thanks to ongoing efforts such as the Black Sea Grain Initiative, some of the negative consequences of the war have been mitigated on the human, security, political, and economic Switzerland is providing humanitarian aid, hosting refugees, and has launched the reconstruction process in Ukraine last summer in Lugano. But more needs to be done, for example, in the area of humanitarian needs and, above all, demining. My country will continue to support Ukraine while not forgetting other conflicts around the world. On Monday, for instance, I will be hosting a pledging conference for Yemen in Geneva with my Swedish counterpart. Mr. President, by supporting this resolution on Ukraine today, on the eve of the first anniversary of the war, we are sending a clear message in favor of the UN Charter. Expectations are high, ladies and gentlemen. Let us not disappoint those who are counting on us, whether in Ukraine, in Russia, or in any other country. I thank you. I thank the federal minister of Switzerland.
Now I give the floor to His Excellency Kostadin Kojabashev, Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Bulgaria.
Mr. President of the General Assembly, Mr. Secretary-General, Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, Bulgaria aligns itself with the statement delivered on behalf of the European Union yesterday. A year has passed since the start of the Russian Federation's unprovoked and unjustified war of aggression against Ukraine, a war which is not only in gross violation of international law and of the principles of the UN Charter, but has seriously damaged global security and stability and has caused and continues to cause immense suffering. During this year, the General Assembly has consistently come together to stand again this despicable act of aggression and against the violation of the UN Charter. Together, we need to continue to fiercely defend the principles of the UN Charter, international law, and the rules-based order because they are our only guarantee for peace. I reiterate once again Bulgaria's unwavering support for the sovereignty, independence, unity, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, including within its territorial waters. We stand to Ukraine, and we will not recognize Russia's attempted annexation and illegal referendum. We demand that the Russian Federation immediately cease its military actions and unconditionally withdraw all its forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine. Mr. President, Russia's war of aggression has resulted in thousands of casualties and injured, massive displacement of civilians, catastrophic destruction of critical civilian infrastructure. Bulgaria is deeply concerned with the continued worsening humanitarian situation. We call for respect of international humanitarian law and unimpeded humanitarian access. Bulgaria, as all other EU member states, has kept and will continue to keep its borders open to everyone fleeing the war in Ukraine without any discrimination. We will continue to provide humanitarian assistance on the ground via different humanitarian actors, including OCHA, UNICEF, and ICRC. The global food crisis that the world faces today, initially triggered by climate changes, conflicts, the pandemic consequences, has been very significantly aggravated by Russia's war of aggression against Ukraine. Bulgaria will do its part to mitigate the most immediate consequences of this crisis and will continue to work for fighting long-term solutions. We welcome the Black Sea Grain Initiative and the leadership of the Secretary-General in restoring the grain exports from Ukraine's Black Sea ports. While acknowledging that the situation remains very critical and the need for humanitarian assistance to a number of countries in the Global South persists, we call for the renewal of the Black Sea Grain Initiative in March and for its unimpeded implementation. Mr. President, the Russian Federation bears full responsibility for its aggression and all the destruction and loss of life, and it must and will be held accountable in accordance with international law. Only through ensuring justice for all victims will stand a chance to prevent such crimes in the near future. Excellencies, today the General Assembly bears a historic responsibility, a responsibility to stand for the principles of the UN Charter, to stand for peace and for international rules-based order. Bulgaria is proud to have cosponsored draft resolution, principles of the Charter of the United Nations, underlying a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine as it stands for peace. Its purpose is to help bring this conflict to an end and to reaffirm our collective support for the international principles upon which a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace must be based. I urge all of you to vote in favor of the draft resolution in front of us. I would like to thank the Ukrainian people for their extraordinary courage and resilience. And finally, I reiterate once again Bulgaria's unwavering support for the efforts of Ukraine to achieve a lasting peace in line with the United Nations Charter and the international law. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the Deputy Minister for Foreign Affairs of Bulgaria. And now I give the floor to His Excellency Peter Burke, Minister of State for European Affairs and Defense of Ireland.
President, Ireland aligns itself with the statement of the European Union. President, we meet today to mark one year since Russia's full-scale invasion of Ukraine, a year of horrific debt and destruction caused by Russia's illegal and unjustified war. Let us be clear, this invasion was unprovoked and entirely of Russia's making. Let me also be clear, Ireland will continue to stand fully with Ukraine and its people in the face of this brutal Russian aggression. President, this year and this war have been marked by Russia's blatant disregard for human life, for the UN Charter, for border international law, including international humanitarian law. Russia has ruthlessly targeted civilians and civilian infrastructure, seeking to starve and freeze the people of Ukraine into submission. Russia's war has seen the deaths of tens of thousands of Ukrainians, men, women, and children. It has forced over 13 million people to flee their homes in search of safety. Over 8 million refugees, mostly women and children, have sought protection across Europe. Over 5 million people have been displaced within Ukraine. Millions more have been forcibly deported to Russia and held in contravention of international law. Yet, despite all of this, Ukraine remains steadfast in its resistance and the defense of its democratic principles. This war has also seen a generation of Russian youth sacrificed to President Putin's imperialist fantasies. President, this is a war of choice. Just as Russia chose to start this war, they can choose to end it. We strongly support the tireless efforts by the UN Secretary-General as well as by Ukraine itself to bring an end to this conflict and for a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace based on the principles of the UN Charter. President, the effects of Russia's war are being felt across the world. Russia's actions have seen the world's most vulnerable people suffer from increased food and economic insecurity with the rising cost of energy and commodities. Ireland and the European Union are responding to the global effects of Russia's senseless war, including through the EU solidarity lanes and the war, including through the EU solidarity lanes and the Team Europe response to global food insecurity. We will continue to stand with the people of Ukraine and the most vulnerable around the world. We support the Black Sea Grain Initiative, which must be continued to allow lifesaving grain to reach those who need it. President, this is a war that has seen reckless Russian attacks on nuclear facilities in Ukraine. A year of threats by Russia to use nuclear weapons on those that might come to Ukraine's aid. It is regrettable and worrying, in this regard, that Russia has now chosen to suspend its participation with the US under the New START Treaty. President, Ireland remains fully committed to the sovereignty, independence, unity, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. Those borders have not changed, and Russia's use of force will not change them. Ireland calls on the Russian Federation to immediately cease hostilities and unconditionally withdraw from the entire territory of Ukraine. We call on the Russian Federation to refrain from further threats or the use of force of any kind, including nuclear weapons, against Ukraine or any other member state which could have serious implications beyond the region. Russia's actions are not just a threat to Ukraine; they are a threat to the entirety of the UN membership. Every state relies on the rules-based international order for their prosperity, for their independence, for their sovereignty. If we fail to hold Russia accountable, if we fail to respond to their attack on the UN Charter, we will leave the world in a more dangerous place for us all. President, the international community and the General Assembly have repeatedly made clear its condemnation of this war, including through this special resolution. As we mark this anniversary, with no end to Russia's war in sight, a further resolution is being put to the General Assembly, calling for a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in line with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. We call on all member states to support this resolution. Thank you.
I thank the Minister of State for European Affairs and Defense of Ireland. Now I give the floor to Her Excellency Ioana Sumovuori, State Secretary to the Minister for Foreign Affairs of Finland.
Mr. President, your excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. A year ago, in the early hours of 24th of February, we woke up to a new grim reality. Russia had launched a brutal, full-scale invasion of its sovereign neighboring country, Ukraine. Russia's unprovoked and unjustified aggression against Ukraine was a turning point. For the past years, Russia has been turning away from cooperation and rule-based international order. The illegal annexation of Crimea and the war in eastern Ukraine that started in 2014 changed our perception of Russia. Yet, most of us could not imagine a full-scale war. It is important to remember that the path of dialogue and diplomacy was always an option. That was not the path Russia took. War and destruction were Russia's choice. Mr. President, your excellencies, it is appalling to see a permanent member of the UN Security Council disregard its obligations for maintaining peace and security. Instead, we are witnessing a flagrant violation of international law and the UN Charter and commonly agreed principles. Russia's methods of warfare in Ukraine systematically violate international law, most notably the laws of war. Russian missiles have targeted Ukrainian civilians and infrastructure, causing immeasurable damage and suffering. The attacks have destroyed hospitals, maternity wards, schools, kindergartens, and places of worship. Testimonies from Ukraine and the areas liberated from the Russian occupation tell the gruesome tale of torture, extrajudicial executions, and sexual violence. Our message is loud and clear: we must hold Russia accountable for its violations of international law, including repatriations for damage. We must ensure that there is no impunity for atrocity crimes committed in Ukraine. It is not only morally imperative, but it's our right and our duty to do so. Mr. President, Russia's war of aggression against Ukraine has serious consequences and causes human suffering, not only in Ukraine, but also globally. Finland continues to provide political, defense, humanitarian, and financial assistance to Ukraine and its people. Global ramifications of the war include food and energy crises, and Finland continues to support global community to alleviate negative consequences of Russia's actions. We also support the implementation of the Black Sea Grain Agreement. Mr. President, today the General Assembly is going to decide on a resolution on principles of comprehensive, lasting, and just peace in Ukraine. The resolution is about Ukraine, but it's also about all of us. Wouldn't your country expect support from the United Nations, from all of us, if your country would be invaded and part of it annexed by a neighbor? Wouldn't you be disappointed if you did not get support from others? I also want to underline that according to the UN Charter, if a member state of the UN is attacked, it has an inherent right of self-defense, both individually and supported by other member states. Wouldn't your country seek support in such distress? Mr. President, your excellencies, Finland's support for Ukraine and its people remains firm. We also support President Zelensky's peace initiative and its implementation. To achieve comprehensive, lasting, and just peace, Russia must immediately end its brutal and illegal invasion to Ukraine. We call on Russia to respect the independence and territorial integrity of Ukraine, to stop missile strikes on Ukrainian cities, and withdraw its forces from the territory of Ukraine. It is our duty as the General Assembly to vote for the resolution before us and against the amendments proposed by Belarus. We need to show our strong support for Ukraine, its sovereignty, and territorial integrity. Support for peace and the very principles of the UN Charter must be achieved in this room today. When UN Charter rule-based international order comes under attack, we must defend it together. Thank you very much.
I thank the State Secretary to the Minister for Foreign Affairs of Finland. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Colombia.
Colombia rejects the use of force against the territorial integrity or the political independence of any country, since this constitutes a clear violation of the fundamental principles and purposes of international law and the United Nations Charter. Likewise, we reject any unprovoked aggression by one state against another. This only entails adverse consequences for the civilian population, particularly women, children, and other vulnerable groups. These consequences include the loss of life, material damage, a shortage of food and energy, and rising poverty. Mr. President, in line with our total peace policy outside our national borders, the Colombian government calls on the parties to seek a negotiated, peaceful, and lasting settlement to the conflict in Ukraine, and we stand with the victims claimed by this conflict. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Colombia. And now I offer the floor to the distinguished representative of Uruguay.
The 24th of February marks one year since the unjustified invasion of Ukrainian territory by military forces of the Russian Federation. This led to a persistent conflict with extremely adverse consequences, not only for the countries involved, but also for the region and the entire international community. Today, Uruguay joins its voice to that of numerous countries that have made calls aimed at bringing an end to the hostilities. Uruguay has spoken clearly in statements made in previous sessions of the emergency special session since last March. We have roundly condemned the military invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. We've denounced it as a clear violation of the principles of the United Nations Charter that all members must not only respect but also comply with and enforce. On this occasion, we urge the Russian Federation to cease its military operations and stop the aggression against Ukraine, withdrawing its forces from Ukrainian territory as soon as possible. Both parties to the conflict must make the utmost efforts to return to the negotiating table in order to resolve their differences peacefully, as stipulated by the United Nations Charter. Uruguay has insistently demanded false respect for international law and has recalled that it is illegal to acquire territory through the use of force or other mechanisms contravening the United Nations Charter. This rule of international law, provided expressly in the Charter and endorsed by the General Assembly, the Security Council, and the jurisprudence of the International Court of Justice, means that territorial annexation in a context of aggression by one state is a violation of the Charter of our organization and of international law. Consequently, the Uruguay government reiterates its firm support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. For these reasons, Uruguay has co-sponsored and will vote in favor of the draft resolution before us in this meeting of the General Assembly, which contains a resounding call for the violence to be brought to an end and for just and lasting peace to be restored. In this context, I wish to recall that the rejection of the use of force and the peaceful settlement of disputes are fundamental principles of Uruguay's foreign policy. Finally, we reiterate our call so that through the negotiating mechanisms provided in the UN Charter with the participation of the Security Council and Secretary-General, avenues for dialogue are found to make it possible to agree on the next steps to de-escalate the conflict and so that through diplomatic negotiations, the parties to the conflict can resolve their differences and bring an end to the war. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Uruguay. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
One year into the Ukraine crisis, the conflict is still grinding on and growing in scale, wreaking havoc to countless lives. Its spill-over effect is intensifying. We are deeply worried about this. China's position on the Ukraine crisis issue is consistent and clear. The sovereignty and territorial integrity of all countries should be respected. The purposes and principles of the UN Charter should be observed. The legitimate security concerns of all countries should be taken seriously. All efforts conducive to peaceful resolution of the crisis should be supported. Under the current situation, I wish to share the following four points. First, the top priority is to facilitate ceasefire and cessation of hostilities without delay. Conflicts and wars have no winners. The longer the brutality, the greater the human suffering. We once again call on the parties to the conflict, remain rational, restrain their impulses, and prevent the crisis from getting worse or even out of control. The parties to the conflict should strictly abide by international humanitarian law, avoid attacking civilians and civilian infrastructure, protect women, children, and other victims of the conflict, respect the basic rights of prisoners of war. All parties should strictly abide by nuclear safety conventions and guard against man-made nuclear accidents. Nuclear weapons cannot be used. Nuclear war cannot be fought. All parties should join together against the use or threat of use of nuclear weapons, prevent nuclear proliferation, and avoid a nuclear crisis. Second, dialogue and negotiation is the only viable way to resolve the Ukraine crisis. At the beginning of the crisis, Russia and Ukraine held several rounds of talks and made important progress. Regrettably, peace talks have since stalled. The reason behind this warrants deep reflection. The lessons of history tell us that crisis, however deep, can ultimately be resolved peacefully. No matter how difficult it is, the door to a political solution cannot be closed. We support Russia and Ukraine moving towards each other, resuming direct dialogue as soon as possible, bringing their legitimate concerns into the negotiation, setting out feasible options, putting an early end to the crisis, and giving peace a chance. Third, the international community should make joint efforts to facilitate peace talks. One year into the Ukraine crisis, brutal facts offer an ample proof that sending weapons will not bring peace. Adding fuel to the fire will only exacerbate tensions. Prolonging and expanding the conflict will only make ordinary people pay an even haptier price. We reiterate our appeal that diplomacy and negotiation cannot be abandoned. Efforts towards ceasefire and talks must go on. The international community should create conditions for this to happen rather than fend the flames and seek self-interest. We urge the countries concerned to stop abusing unilateral sanctions and long-arm jurisdiction. Instead, they should act in a way conducive to de-escalation. The international community should strengthen coordination and cooperation in energy, finance, grain trade, and transportation, and work together to mitigate this spill-over effect of the crisis. We support the UN General Assembly playing an active role in bridging differences, building consensus, and forging synergy among member states. Fourth, pursue common security and achieve lasting peace. Security is not the prerogative of just a few countries. One country's security should not be achieved at the expense of other countries' security. Boosting or even enlarging military blocks will only undermine regional security and drive peace further away. The final settlement of the Ukraine crisis hinges on abandoning the Cold War mentality, giving due regard to and respecting the reasonable security concerns of all countries, thereby properly addressing their legitimate security aspirations and advancing the building of a balanced, effective, and sustainable European security architecture. Mr. President, as a responsible country, China always stands on the side of peace and dialogue, and always advocates peace and promotes talks. China will soon issue a position paper on the political settlement of the Ukraine crisis. We're ready to continue playing a constructive role in resolving the Ukraine crisis and bringing about peace at an early date. Thank you, President.
I thank the distinguished representative of China. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran.
In the name of God, the compassionate and merciful, Mr. President, excellencies. One year after the start of the Ukraine crisis, the conflict still shows no sign of ending, and the international community continues to grapple with a range of challenges, including devastating humanitarian consequences of civilians and serious implications... devastating humanitarian consequences of civilians and serious implication for the global economy. Given these complex and difficult circumstances, it is essential that we remain fully committed to achieving a peaceful resolution and lasting peace in Ukraine. This must be done in accordance with the principles outlined in the Charter of the United Nations. Mr. President, the Islamic Republic of Iran's position on the ongoing conflict in Ukraine has not changed. We are steadfast in our commitment to upholding the principles and purposes enshrined in the Charter of the United Nations, including the principles of sovereign equality and territorial integrity of states. We urge all parties to fully comply with their obligation on the international humanitarian law, including taking constant precautions to protect civilians and critical infrastructure and facilitating safe and unfettered access to humanitarian aid for those in need. Mr. President, we acknowledge that this conflict is determinantal to both parties, as neither can gain any long-term advantage. To achieve a sustained solution, it is crucial for all involved parties to abandon their military ambitions and prioritize finding a peaceful diplomatic resolution. By prioritizing dialogue and diplomacy and addressing the underlying cause of the conflict, we can take crucial steps toward achieving a solution that not only mitigates the devastating humanitarian impact, but also restores regional stability and security. Against the backdrop of the increasing need to end the conflict, my delegation supports the idea of leveraging the Secretary General's capacity, as mandated by the UN Charter, to establish a cross-regional group of independent, competent, impartial countries. The Islamic Republic of Iran is ready to contribute to this process, which could be critical in facilitating constructive dialogue and assisting in identification of solutions to the current impasse in the Ukraine conflict. As a first step, we call for an immediate and comprehensive ceasefire, coupled with the provision of humanitarian aids to those in need, which should take precedence over all else. Mr. President, on the anniversary of this tragic conflict, we had hoped that the draft resolution before us would present a practical and achievable means to bring the end to the conflict, consisting with the UN mission. Unfortunately, the proposed text falls short of the comprehensively and impartially addressing all aspects of the issue and fails to acknowledge the condition and provocation actions that have contributed to the crisis. Moreover, the policies and the action declared by certain sponsors of this resolution raise doubts about their political will to resolve the dispute peacefully. These policies and actions on the ground have only aggravated the situation rather than promoting a peaceful and lasting solution. Instead of bringing the member of a state together, the resolution may further polarize them, potentially worsening the conflict in Ukraine. We believe that any resolution to this issue must be based on a thorough and unbiased assessment of the situation and underlying cause of the conflict, and must consider all relevant factors and perspectives. It is also critical that all parties involved demonstrate a genuine commitment to reaching a peaceful resolution and take concrete steps in that direction. In the light of these concerns, our delegation has decided to abstain from voting on this resolution. Nonetheless, we remain committed to working toward a peaceful and sustainable resolution of the conflict, and we stand ready to engage in constructive dialogue and cooperation with all parties to achieve this important goal. Mr. President, I would like to address the reference made to my country by the representative of the Israeli regime during the general debate yesterday. Indeed, Iran-phobic campaign and widespread systematic dissemination of disinformation and baseless allegations against Iran have always been one of the main elements of the statement by the Israeli regime in this august body. The Israeli regime cannot conceal its brutalities in Palestine or distract attention away from its longstanding malign activities and demonic policies in other countries. The Israeli regime is notorious for its atrocities and apartheid policies against the people of Palestine and the region by targeting and killing innocent people, including women and children, in occupied Palestine. The Israeli regime continues to commit flagrant and systematic violations of human rights and all norms of international humanitarian law, especially the core crimes of genocide, crime against humanity, war crime, and crime of aggression. In this regard, we strongly condemn the Israeli regime's recent terrorist attack early on Sunday, nineteen February, against a civilian residential building in the densely populated district of the central Damascus, which continued a flagrant violation of international humanitarian law and endangering regional and international peace and security. The international community must strongly condemn such attacks and compel the Israeli regime to end all acts of aggression against Syria's sovereignty and territorial integrity immediately. Possessing all types of weapons of mass destruction, as well as the most sophisticated conventional weapons, the Israeli regime continues to endanger peace and security in the region and beyond, and at the same time, relentlessly defies constant, strong international call to join internationally legally binding instruments banning weapons of mass destruction. Nevertheless, it attempts to portray Iran's conventional weapons capabilities or its exclusively peaceful nuclear program as a challenge to the regional stability. Mr. President, while we reiterate our commitment to ongoing bilateral cooperation with Ukraine and Russian Federation, my government categorically rejects unsubstantiated claims that Iran has transferred unmanned aerial vehicles for use in Ukraine conflict. Such claims are nothing more than a propaganda campaign used by certain states to advance their political agenda. Iran is willing to engage in constructive bilateral technical and expert exchange with Ukrainian experts in order to clarify unsubstantiated allegations leveled against it. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Romania.
Mr. President, Romania aligns itself with the statement delivered yesterday by the High Representative of the European Union, Mr. Borrell. On behalf of the European Union and its member states, I would like to add some points in my national capacity. What we wish for on the cusp of the one-year mark since the start of Russia's fully fledged war of aggression against Ukraine is very simple: peace for the people of Ukraine, victory of principles and values, and one less bloody conflict for the world. But what we are still witnessing is very different. We continue to see an alarming level of hostilities with no sign of abatement, with unimaginable sufferings for the civilian population, and dire and long-lasting consequences. The human rights and humanitarian consequences of the Russian Federation's aggression against Ukraine, including the continuous attacks against its critical infrastructure, are particularly worrying. No less cruel are reports of the atrocities committed on the territory of Ukraine, for which we must ensure accountability. This continued aggression undermines the core of the rules-based international order and effective multilateralism, and remains a matter of concern for the international community. The hybrid war proliferated by Russia, even more intense through fake news, disinformation, and malign interferences, aims not only to destabilize the region and the most vulnerable states, as the Republic of Moldova, but also to undermine our unity, mutual trust, and solidarity. The Russian Federation is testing the resolve of the world to stand up for its norms and values. By attacking the basic principles enshrined in the UN Charter, the Russian Federation, as a permanent member of the Security Council, is also attacking the very foundation of the international peace and security. The stakes of this conflict are clear to all of us, and the world has to send a clear message: there is no justification for bloodshed, destruction, and human suffering. We need the full force, determination, and legitimacy of the General Assembly to reaffirm that international matters, that the Charter matters, and that we stand by the rules put in place for the protection of every single member state of this organization. The upcoming vote on the resolution in front of us, which we must adopt with the largest possible majority, is an opportunity to reaffirm our support for Ukraine and Ukrainian people and to call for a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine, based on the principles of the UN Charter and international law. Mr. President, Romania has been at the forefront of countering all multidimensional effects of this war since day one. Romania is also fully engaged in international efforts to end Russia's impunity. We are also a strong supporter of the efforts to seek accountability of all crimes committed in Ukraine. The perpetrators must pay, and our collective efforts must be efficient in this regard, as Ukraine seeks the justice it deserves. We support the establishment of a special tribunal for the crime of aggression in relation with the situation in Ukraine. Romania has stood by Ukraine, our direct neighbor, during this whole year of the Russian aggression. A multidimensional effort has been ongoing for the past year to accelerate the transfer of around thirteen million tons Ukrainian grain, I repeat, thirteen million, one-three, through Romanian territory. These have reached countries in the global south that have been greatly impacted by the increase in global food prices and that have been already facing food insecurity. The Romanian port of Constanza at the Black Sea has become the main gateway for Ukrainian grain shipments, a real food hub at the European level, a direct effort to contribute to ensuring global food security. With the same goal, we have also advocated and we hope for a continuation of the Black Sea Grain Initiative. Around three-point-six million Ukrainian citizens have entered Romania so far; among these, over one-hundred-and-ten-thousand remain. We have offered humanitarian aid to those in need. We have also set up a humanitarian hub, and all this to reduce the suffering and help Ukrainians to defend and build their way to peace. Mr. President, what we all want is peace. This was made clear today and yesterday by countless delegations. A comprehensive, just, and lasting peace, a peace that does not reward the aggressor, a peace based on the principles of the UN Charter, which we have bravely stood up for in the past. And peace in Ukraine cannot be restored by inaction. As a matter of urgency, the Russian Federation must reserve its illegal actions and unconditionally withdraw its military forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. And this call is what the resolution before us delivers. We have the power to unite around this text. Romania supports the draft text, is one of the cosponsors, and calls on the whole UN membership to vote in favor of this resolution for just and lasting peace in Ukraine, based on the principles of the UN Charter. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Romania. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the International Institute for Democracy and Electoral Assistance.
Mr. President, excellencies. It has been one year since the Russian Federation launched its illegal war against Ukraine. One year of aggression, of war crimes, of crimes against humanity. One year of brutality against the basic principles of the UN Charter, against the promise of democratic rights and freedoms, against international rules-based order, and respect for the sovereign equality of all member states. One year of death, displacement, and devastation occurring each day in territories invaded by Russia and rebuilt in areas recovered by Ukraine. International Idea reiterates its condemnation of Russia's illegitimate and immoral war against Ukraine and urges the immediate and unequivocal withdrawal of all Russian military forces from Ukrainian territory. Until this occurs, we welcome the adoption, enforcement, and continued escalation of sanctions by the international community against the Russian Federation. Ultimately, the responsibility of the Russian Federation must be addressed in accordance with General Assembly Resolution sixty slash one forty-seven and Universal Declaration of Human Rights. This accountability is a matter of international law, and rule of law must and shall prevail. We encourage the UN Secretary General to continue working to advance ceasefire talks and to support increased humanitarian access to the war-affected areas and protection of civilians. The resolution being debated today calls for a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine. Such an objective is inextricably connected to the democratic ambitions of the Ukrainian people. As International Idea has noted previously, this conflict is about democracy as much as it is about sovereignty. Over many years, and despite many obstacles, Ukrainians have repeatedly affirmed their commitment to democratic values. The result has been steady improvement across a variety of democratic indicators, including respect for media freedoms, the fight against corruption, and the conduct of free and fair elections as measured by International Idea's indices and reports. Today, this hard-won progress hangs in the balance. But let us be clear: Ukrainians have chosen democracy. There's a comprehensive, just, and lasting peace in Ukraine must be a democratic peace determined by and for Ukrainians. Support from the international community should reflect this democratic imperative. Among the needs of a post-war Ukraine, democracy, support, and the defense of human rights will be crucial. Excellencies, the outcome of this institutional process will reverberate far beyond Ukraine. It is a test of the defense and rebuilding of inclusive and sustainable democracy as a guarantor of rights for both people and nations. In this effort, we should not lose sight of the need to enable a path for democracy to return to Russia as well, as part of securing a lasting and regional to return to Russia as well, as part of securing a lasting and regional and global peace. We must say clearly: a democratic Russia would have not unleashed this tragedy. Advancing democracy is the single best way to build and guarantee global peace. Ukrainians are putting their lives on the line every day to defend the values that we claim to hold—the values of the UN Charter, of sovereignty, human rights and multilateralism. Helping them to preserve a future for Ukrainian democracy will be our greatest tribute to them. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the International Institute for Democracy and Electoral Assistance. Now I give the floor to Her Excellency Annalena Berbock, Minister for Foreign Affairs of Germany.
Esteemed colleagues, 45 seconds. Forty-five seconds to get your grandmother to safety. Forty-five seconds to make it to the basement. Forty-five seconds—that's how long it takes for missiles from Russia to hit the city of Kharkiv after you hear the sirens. I met teenagers in Kharkiv in eastern Ukraine for whom counting to forty-five has become part of their daily life. Teenagers, grandmothers, fathers, who want nothing more than for this war to end, to have peace. Russia's war of aggression has not only brought terrible suffering to the people of Ukraine. This war has opened gaping wounds across the world. Families on all continents who cannot make ends meet because of rising food and energy prices. I think all of them and most of us here agree on one simple thing: we want the suffering to stop in Ukraine and worldwide. We want this war to end. We want peace. And the good thing is, we do have a peace plan right here in front of us. It's called the Charter of the United Nations. Its principles, which apply to every state, are very simple: sovereign equality, territorial integrity and the non-use of force. That's why the road to peace is also very clear. Russia must withdraw its troops from Ukraine. Russia must stop the bombing. Russia must return to the UN Charter. Each and every one of us here today has an opportunity to contribute to this peace plan. By telling the aggressor to stop, by making clear that it's not peace if an aggressor tells its victim to simply give up, that it's not peace if an aggressor is rewarded for its ruthless violence. This would run counter to the very essence of our United Nations Charter. It would not mean peace but more violence. That's why we are supporting Ukraine in its right to defend itself, as enshrined in Article 51 of the UN Charter. I've heard also today some of you who said that by arming Ukraine, we are adding fuel to the fire. Let me ask you honestly: why on earth would we do that? We did not want this war. We did not choose this war. We too would much rather focus every bit of our energy and also of our money on fixing our schools, on fighting climate crisis, on strengthening social justice. But the truth is, if Russia stops fighting, this war ends. If Ukraine stops fighting, Ukraine ends. And the human suffering would continue every single day. Abduction, rape, torture, children counting to forty-five every single day to save their lives. The worst global trade of devastation would continue: inflation, energy shortages, hunger. That's why today's vote is also about all of our futures. Today, each and every one of us here has to choose: to stand isolated with the oppressor or to unite for peace, to stay silent or to protect our UN Charter, so that the Charter can protect us. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished Minister for Foreign Affairs of Germany. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on this item. We shall proceed to consider Draft Resolution A/ES 11/L7 and Draft Amendments A/ES 11/L8 and A/ES 11/L9, starting with the explanatory vote before the vote at 3 o'clock sharp. This meeting is adjourned.